Ten of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Locals.
Alderman Star.
Here.
Blackdy.
Here.
Woodset.
Here.
Polson.
Here.
Eller.
Here.
Kerrigan.
Yep.
Mayor Barner.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thanks for all the venues have come out so much. Uh, did you have a final report? A couple minutes on the exempt agenda?
Yes, I have a finance report. We met last Wednesday. And I'll just run down the agenda just a little bit. We talked briefly about the June summary and check reports. And staff was able to answer some questions on that. Kathy set up a presentation from Angie Hughes with Missouri Security Investment Program or MOSF. And I think she was recommended by Joan Plany. So she made a brief presentation about some investments and types of investments and rates. So I, I think that we should invite her back at some point for the whole board to hear what the finance committee heard on that. I don't, I guess Kathy, she came so we could make, the finance committee can make a recommendation to have her come back, maybe something like that?
Just to start the thought process of are we getting the best thing for our bill?
Okay. And, and then Kathy told us that she was maybe going to talk to the Bank of Odessa about maybe doing something different. Where our monies are out there in some accounts to maybe make a little more money currently. Um, we talked about our credit card processing fees and they've gotten way out of hand. And Kathy was going to call them to see about maybe reducing some rates on that. Um, Alderman Woodson wanted to, uh, to do add purchase orders possibly or a module to our computer system. We put that on hold and I think if it's okay Bruce, we can bring that up to maybe a meeting here for the whole board to discuss adding purchase orders to. Our auditors are not taking care of some things that I think that Alderman Woodset would like to add some securities on that. Is that, or did you want to speak to that at this point?
We can go through the new process and discuss adding it to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then we talked about the purchasing policy. We're going to bring that back at our August meeting. And I think with some verbiage change, some word changes, we might have that ready to then come to the Board of Ald. So that was it for the finance. We had a long finance meeting, so. Oh, and then I think we're going to try to meet on the 25th at 4:30 before our next Board of Ald meeting if Alderman Polson can be there. So that was it. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second motion, second, all in favor? Six zero, the consent agenda is approved. Very important. Uh, starting off, I just completed a podcast with the SROs. That was awesome. I got to know our SOR, SROs a lot better and what they do and how important they are to our community and our school system. I hope everybody catches that. It will be published tonight and ready for actually later this evening it'll be uploaded. And I was highly encouraged everybody to listen. I learned a lot and we had a good time. Thanks Chief Thompson for setting that up, recommending again and getting that to happen. That was awesome. Thank you. Uh, puddle jumper days are coming up. Looks like we're going to have some good weather. Hot, make sure hopefully finally, um, be safe. Just please everybody be safe. And we had some great puddle jumper day in the past. This is not going to be any exception. I'm sure. Let's hope we got some better weather and looking forward to everybody have fun, but be safe. I just, uh, I returned, uh, Friday from the Missouri Main Street Connection Conference. Where I went to learn about some downtown revitalization, revitalization techniques. Got a lot of great information. Got a lot of good, good stuff to bring back to the downtown collective. And we're going to meet with them on August 12th at 30 at Woodbury's. And looking forward to sharing what I learned. Really good stuff. And I wanted to congratulate Shawna on a well done job with the savings city report. Uh, here that went exceptionally well. It'll feel received. So congratulations. She did a well done job for that. Then I will turn, and that's it for the mayor's report. Now to the other room for Alderman Blackdy.
Okay, I attended the finding zoning meeting. They discussed the preliminary plot for the 1912 building. Cause they put some additions, going to add side parking spots. Wherever it belongs. And then they, the DUD thoroughly, thoroughly discussed. There has been a lot of time now, lots of effort put into this. Once again, it's going back for language and people revisitation. When they meet for the next meeting, all of that will be completed and the public hearing. Which you let it say.
Yep, public hearing at the next P and Z and then at the Board of Alderman following.
Oh.
Very good. That is, okay, very good. Alderman here.
Uh, I don't have much tonight. Um, just one thing to reflect on. The company still, most of us knew all the disasters and stuff that happened that, like, a lot of the things that happened there. That, that caused me to pause and think about what we're doing with the city here. If something could happen here that we may not have on our radar or something like that. That could catch us and our citizens off guard. And I thought about some of the tornado sirens that we just placed and some of those things. I just want to say thank you to the city staff. I think we're trying and thinking about things. We hope none of those terrible things happen here. But I think we're trying to plan for those things. So we can at least try and help the community out and, and anything that way. So I just want to say thank you for at least being mindful, trying to plan ahead for the worst thing that we hope never happens. So.
Alderman Polson.
I think tonight is.
Alderman Eller. Um, I just want to do what you said about Shawna's state at the city address. I attended that Chamber of Commerce luncheon and she did a great job. There were so many things that went on in the city. In fact, we were like, you're running out of time, Joe. So I, I'm very proud of Shawna and she did a great job. And I'm glad I attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting. And anybody that can do that, um, all the, all the chamber meetings I think are well worth it. That's all I have tonight.
Very good. Alderman Star.
I want to touch on puddle jumpers. I know that it's an inconvenience for all of the businesses down there. And I know that several of them have to close or choose schools, you know? But the puddle jumpers, they appreciate it. We, we try hard to put on something that everyone can hack on, you know, and hack on. But we do know it's an inconvenience for the business. And some of them choose to stay open. It's wonderful. But we would like to thank them from the bottom of our hearts for, for choosing to do that. So thank you also.
Alderman Woodson. Nothing to reward. Thanks for that. All right. With that, we'll move on to the city of Memphis.
Okay, so I will start with the, or can I do the main fair more important? I will start with the Parks Department. They have added an extra day of water aerobics for this season. So they moved from two days to three days, which is Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday. Um, the annual Samantha Thompson Memorial fundraiser will be held Friday at the pool. So our pool hours will be adjusted just ever since I moved, be open from one to three. And then that fundraiser starts at four o'clock. And, um, let's see, the pool closes for the entire season on August 17th. We have soccer signups, fall soccer signups, um, going on now. The last day will be on August 3rd. We will begin volleyball signups from August 4th to August 24th. We will begin the pickleball doubles league beginning on August 7th. Uh, if you were anticipating attending the partners meeting last Wednesday, they did not meet quorum. So they decided to reschedule their meeting to this Wednesday. And Lindsay and city hall staff are working to, um, kind of get things in order for the October 11th fall cleanup. We have kind of landed on the fact that we will be doing that at Dyer Park. Typically whenever we do our, our spring cleanup, that's just a half day, eight till noonish. Um, this will be an entire full day and it will be open to all of the block accounts. So. Making progress on that project for sure. Kenny's been working very closely with our engineers and our contractors on the ninth street list. Or the ninth street project overall. So we, um, have started a little bit of work. I don't have all the information right now, but I will be bringing it to. Are anticipating a possible change of order for the ninth street lift station there as a part of that project. So more information to come there. We started off our generator contract with Cummins with somewhat of a bang. Um, the generator at the Northwest Treatment Plant, um, did not do the proper thing that it was supposed to do. When we experienced a West Central Electric Power outage over the weekend. So that caused some major backups and, uh, operational issues for Kenny and against the crew. But they've been working through that today and props to them for all they've had to do. Get things back to normal. Uh, we do, we do same soil sampling every five years for the wastewater department. For all of the bits of land that we have that we landed by solids to. So that process has been completed for wastewater. And, uh, as well as kind of some sampling that's needed for the lime sledge removal, removal at the, at the water, at the water treatment plant. So our next step will be, um, moving forward with the contracting of that lime sledge removal of, of the test done. Um, again, we carry on with a large, large, large amount of locates that, that really make a large impact on our public works crews, all three departments. Uh, we experienced very high amount of locates due to the fiber installation. And we have been experiencing quite a few locates due to FODOT. Where they're starting to do some preliminary work for the improved I-70 project. They're weighing, uh, rather burden them on our crews. So, uh, locate that there's. Uh, that's all for the wastewater department. And for finance with Kathy, uh, we do, we have, um, issued a contingent offer for a payables clerk and city collector. So we hope to have that person onboard and, and back to full staff in city hall. We've been operating with short staff in city hall, having to balance our coverage of the front and, um, all hands on deck, if you will. So, uh, we'll be very happy to be full staff again. Uh, also Kathy's been working a great, great amount. We have this year CIP, we have a lot of projects that are needing to go out for bid. So Kathy's been putting in, um, a lot of assistance on getting those to the finish line and activated. So we can get those kind of, uh, checked off our CIP for bid. Thank you for that. Uh, for the police department, uh, Kathy and Josh both met with the school district recently. So if you guys remember, we brought you the MOU for the SRO school year. So that, that actually went to the school district. And their attorneys had some slight adjustments and then our attorneys had some more slight adjustments. So that will be coming back to you. I just wanted to give you guys a heads up on that. Mostly just legal changes. So that will be back in front of you at our next meeting. We do have two, the two SRO positions filled. One was from an external candidate and one was from an internal candidate. Which generated another, um, position open within our, our, uh, group. So we do have one, uh, police officer position open at this time. All departments really are getting ready for puddle jumpers prep. Uh, we have made some decisions on the national night out for this year, which is typically would be tomorrow. Uh, where we've moved it to, uh, October 7th. And it will be at the 1912 field at Drive and Street, uh, across from the post office. Uh, we've been moving forward on our new phone system. So going from Mytel to Ring Central, that's been moving along. Uh, we will anticipate a temporary phone outage once we do do that official switch. So we'll make sure to communicate that outwardly as best as we can, just so folks are aware. And it's, it's also really during the time where planned it out. So it's a little bit slower over a period of time. The nine one one, nine one one board has met a couple of weeks ago. It was just kind of an organizational meeting, but their next meeting will be on August 19th in Higginsville. And, uh, Chief Thompson will be in attendance to just learn more about how the nine one one tax, uh, will positively or negatively impact our, um, community. Uh, with the, another props for the police department. We had, Chief Thompson had a meeting with Kristen Hillbriner, our county prosecutor. And she's, um, interested in wanting to highlight or do some type of press release for eight recent cases that have been closed by our police department. And she wants to specifically highlight that the exceptional work that our police department did to get those cases closed. So, uh, we're excited to come out with that information and highlight our police department in a different way. The road closures, so if you noticed today, the, um, Drive and Street is closed due to the carnival going up. So, uh, that'll be closed for the remainder of the week and then we won't do any more road closures until Thursday. Thursday that I think about noon is when we'll start closing down, uh, Mason and Second Street for the puddle jumpers event. For the waste, or for the electric department, we've had, they've been working out some full changeouts on the North Loop. Um, they built new temporaries for our puddle jumpers event. We're really hoping that last year could be our last year to use the temporaries and unfortunately it's not. So they were on their last leg last year. So we were indeed are building a few more. They will be coming in this week of the evening, our electric department will be to put out those new temporaries or some of, uh, put out the temporaries as a whole. For our vendors setup for puddle jumpers. And at the same time, they intend to put the, uh, party lights back up in downtown. And just another thing with our CIP, we have some masonry work and some roof work to be done on the electric plant this year in our CIP. So we've been working, get those quotes put together. So we can move forward with that. For the, uh, community development department, we still have Pine Creek. They are content, we started to do, I think it was, uh, every two weeks. We do a checking with the builder for Pine Creek. Just so we're all on the same page. So those have continued as they move on to the next phases of their project. So the next four houses, so, um, it'd be, let's see, five through eight. How, um, house numbers or house building, building numbers, I guess. Um, they're still progressing forward and they're getting their inspections as, as they need to. So. We also have, uh, as a part of the improved I-70 project, uh, Rodmonker, they're one of the, uh, contractors for the improved I-70. They're going to be bringing in a temporary, uh, concrete construction plant in the industrial zone on Main Street. Out by Action, um, Old Action Products. So that is under, underway. And, um, we're getting their utilities set up for that. It's temporary in the sense that it will be there for the duration of the improved I-70 project. So about, estimated about three years. Four hundred US highway. So they submitted their plan review and we are waiting for the response back. Um, that's at Wells 40 and Johnson there, um, by Hopmer. And, uh, 401 East Mason, there was unfortunately a fire at that house. And after a fire happens, there's a lot of steps that need to happen with our utilities to make sure those are all disconnected. And then IDTS comes in to make sure that the house is exactly being safe for those cleaning crews to come in and, and do what they need to do. So that process has been completed. Uh, a few of the ordinances that we plan on working on for the next, uh, month or two. One would be our annexation ordinance. So, uh, we want to maybe look at how annexations connect with our, um, kind of rule that we've had. That in order to be a part of the, the city of Odessa, city limits, you have to connect to sewer. So we, we want to make sure that that's cleaned up for any future annexations that were to happen. We want to maybe modernize and, um, just make sure that our annexation policy or ordinance is, uh, fitting for our future growth. Uh, we'll also be looking at our electric ordinances when it comes to development. Uh, we're continuing, we brought Joe Laveron to work on some economic development opportunities for us. And then as for the state of the city, like you guys all mentioned, I'll be sure to send those slides out to you guys. So you're all aware of the different, uh, projects we've been working on from that year long lens. So.
Excellent. Thanks Shawna. Okay, with the ball, a couple of comments. Good job. No, it's okay. The old business, we'll look right at the new business. Our first item tonight, presentation on investors by my friend Joey McPlany.
You are going to be very happy that I am not presenting anything. I am here to talk about a couple of things. One is just what you've already heard about, uh, the MOSF program. The MOSF program is the largest, and let me take a step back. My company handles investments for municipalities. I don't want to do it. I, I don't want to do it for Odessa. I don't want to do it for my clients in Missouri. Um, I think there's a bit of a conflict of interest beside the point entirely. MOSF is the largest in the state. And in fact, I put Angie in front of you guys because, uh, they handle it for most of the schools in the state of Missouri. The key thing you must know is that municipalities are very limited on what they can invest in. Uh, has to be basically triple A quality or FDIC insured, which is triple A's level twelve. Uh, has to be a federal, uh, federally guaranteed program. MOSF has a seven day interest rate of a 4.2%. Uh, if your local bank can match it, I'd go, go with it all day long. They have to by law have, have everything FDIC insured, um, or pledge securities against it. So it will be the equivalent of that, uh, of that insurance. The reason I am very specific when I say a seven day rate is because you guys don't spend any money without approval from this, from this council. And so a seven day rate might as well be a checking account for you guys. And so you need to get that invested as quickly as possible. If your local bank were give you a seven day rate or a, a 14 day rate of a 4.22, even close to a 4.2. I'd jump on it like a chicken on a julep in a second. There is no reason not to. MOSF though, is very hard to beat. Uh, normally, uh, first of all, keep this to yourself. The bankers will move their rates. If you go to them and say, hey, I'm getting the 4.2%. Uh, I would rather from MOSF, but I'd rather stay low level. They can move, even though their published rates are different. And they'll put that. Yeah, they can absolutely say, okay, I'll, I'll match it. And what they tend to do is they'll say, oh, I can give you a four, I can give you 450. And then they tell you, well, it's a one year CD or it's a two year CD. That's not what you're looking for. You want, you guys have a lot of money and Elon projects that you're going to spend cash on. And so the seven day rate is probably the best one for you. Now I have told Angie that I'm not going to recommend her if she ever brings a PowerPoint presentation to, to a board meeting. She has one. It's really long. I've seen it. It's terrible. Basically you just know it's a secured investment. It's safe and everybody in, uh, all the schools in the state or almost all the schools in the state use it. And it's, it, it is very liquid, easy to do business with. So, uh, I, I mentioned that. Now there's, uh, first off, take a step. Anybody have any questions?
One of the things you can do, sure, like Joe Lumber. One of the things we should be able to do is plan out our cash flow, which will enable us to put our CDs, for example, in six month CDs. Three month CDs, seven day investments, for example.
You're exactly right.
When I looked at a comparison of Bank Odessa's six month CD, for example, just because that was what they had in the paper this week. They were actually a little bit higher than what MOSF was.
On a six.
So with, yeah, on a six month, I don't know what their others were compared to the numerous CDs that, that MOSF had. But if they're comparable for the same period by your advice, we should jump on.
Absolutely. You want to stay low. They buy your bonds or they, or they sometimes buy your bonds. You want to support local. Uh, you don't want to support local at the expense of the community. And too many times people will say, oh, well, we had to do it because it's our local bank and the local bank gave us some pressure. So we took 1% less. Well, if I think of it this way, I took 1% plus for my entire voters, entire citizens. And all of a sudden then it's not that attractive. So yeah, if, if they can match it, jump on.
So what you're saying, we should plan our cash flow, then compare the period of the investments we should care.
Yep, that's exactly right. You have a lot of cash needs right now, right now at 420 and it's, even if you were buying direct treasury bonds, which are fine. Uh, it, it's a 10 year treasury right now is a 440. So you're not getting that much by locking it up for 10 years. So it's, it's okay to stay short sometimes. Now is a good time to stay short because, um, I wrote down a four week, a four week rate in treasury, just treasury bills is four thirds of two. Uh, so it's remarkable that you, for four weeks or 10 years, you're getting about the same. So you have cash needs, stay liquid. When all of a sudden you don't have the immediate capital improvement program that you have going now. And you can time, you can say, we're going to need 600,000 in, in six months and think we can lock that up. When it comes to, we're going to pick up some, some extra earnings. So that's, that's really, uh, all I've got for you on these investments. You've got an opportunity. There are others out there. This one has been around the longest and very easy to do business with. And again, stay local if you can. Um, there were also questions about your bond rating. I don't know who had the question. Did you guys have an A minus? Which the majority of utility bonds, utility revenue bonds in the country are triple B plus. That, that throws out the whole category of non-rated bonds. Um, triple B bust plus is fine. Uh, obviously A minus is better. And so I wanted to add, add, answer any questions about your bond rating. Um, if you had to, uh, I do have a list of Missouri bonds. For example, Hannibal, Missouri has a, Hannibal, Missouri, by the way, has, and I can get your bond rating up. We have to raise rates. Uh, I suspect you prefer to have an A minus, uh, rather than higher rates than an A plus. Uh, we can do it. Um, but it is, it really does, we also have to grow our population. But Hannibal, Missouri, for example, is an A minus, uh, and they've got 17,000. So you guys are getting at, at a solid, at an A minus, you guys are getting along fine. Really wouldn't change anything. Really wouldn't change anything. You know, you have a proper capital improvement program. You have a proper, uh, investment program. Though we're not following it, you will be following it. Uh, you know, you're getting along just fine.
So, so you're saying the higher rating would not lower our interest rate?
Uh, no, I didn't say that. A higher rating could lower your interest rate. Your interest rates right now are remarkably low. A higher new rating on a new borrowing would. But right now, if you had, if you all of a sudden, if the A minus went to an A plus, your interest rates are exactly the same as they are now. They're not changing. If we refinance, they would be higher. Uh, you would be, uh, because when you, you receive the rating, it was a, a moment in time. Correct. Based on the first, on the borrowed money at that time. We, they, they evaluated every other year, every three years. And so they reevaluated, they came in and they reaffirm the A minus on our outstanding debt. But if, even if they came back and said, oh man, you guys all got all the cash in the world, you're not double A. It wouldn't lower any of our interest rates. And most of our bonds, the reason I don't really push doing this. It wouldn't lower any of our interest rates and most of our bonds, the reason I don't really push doing this. They're going to market tomorrow and say, okay, let's let's tighten things down. Um but most of your debt is staying with the state revolving loan fund, the two percent or better.
But on a new bond, our rates would be lower if we had a higher rating.
You're exactly right.
And if I recall, on the the Missouri municipal bond comparison. There were only three municipal, three city bonds that had a lower rating than Odessa. There were six in the same category, and this is out of thirty seven municipal bonds. So there were three below us, there were six in the same category, there were twenty seven above us.
I must have given you my sheet, my sheet. Yeah, that is, that is absolutely correct. I mean, um but you've got to remember, there are a ton below us. Not just.
It's not not a Missouri municipal.
Yeah, of Missouri municipals.
On your list, no show three.
Right, that that was rated bonds. So on municipalities in the state of Missouri, do not get a rate. They are non-rated, and the reason for that is it costs fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars to get a bond rated. From anywhere from zero dollars to five million dollars.
So they're just not rated.
That's exactly, and there's tons, there's more of those than anything. Now. When we go to look at a bond issue, we would say, okay, uh this is a two million dollar. And would that would that fifteen thousand dollars or sixteen thousand dollars save us any money? So we would take a step back and say, uh if we spent that, so if I, for example, had a five hundred thousand dollar issue, I wouldn't get a rating. Sixteen thousand, we're, it's just not going to, it won't pay itself. But a three million dollar issue or two million dollar issue, it's worth getting a rate. Um in some cases, for example, if it's right at the tusk, which is about a million dollars, I will go out and I will get bond insurance. Bond insurance gives us a double A. And so. Why would I do that? Well, bond insurance costs about anywhere from eighteen to twenty thousand dollars. And the rating is going to cost me fifteen to sixteen thousand. So for a little extra money, I I get a much better rate. And I get bonds that are insured, and so just as a way, and our rates, our rates would be down considerably, considerably, which had bond insurance.
To just clarify, you said there's a ton below us. It's not that they're below us, they're just been rated.
Correct, thank you. Uh but I would, I would absolutely uh affirm they are below you. They couldn't get a rating, or if they got a rating, it would be jumping. So there are, I I I could, I could start listing them off right now. Pineville, Missouri, too small to get a rate. Um you could go around the state, any, we have more communities under the, under a population of a thousand that should never be rated. And and if they were rated, they would get. This is a common rating.
They wouldn't have a five million dollar bond.
No, they would not. Thank you, oh, sure.
Can I go back to the investment policy, like, you know, this is new for for us or for me anyway, I I have not dealt with. So are there any legalities, you know, around? Uh how much money we can take out and invest or anything, you know, I mean, is it a? Whatever money, here's what I'm getting at. When Angie uh came. She was talking about this seven day or seven day yield MOSIP liquid series, which sounded to me like. Just put your money, you can put it out in a minute or. Are there any legalities about how much we have to keep somewhere else or anything?
The law is around what it can be in, not not how much you can put in anyone.
Okay. Very, I, what she presented sounded to me almost too good to be true, that you could earn this on and and get your money in. Yeah.
Yeah, there, and it's not, there are other programs. I I do this in Colorado, I'm doing this in Oklahoma. Oklahoma just adopted this program. Uh a similar program, uh so. Uh so there are schools that always got it, but municipalities couldn't, and so now the now the cities can.
Well, I'd like for her, I I mean, this was a great present, she did offer three uh different options uh during our finance meeting. Uh it was some fixed uh fixed rate, fixed term investment portfolio, which was a term rates. You know, which sounded to me more like a C type thing.
It is.
So, um but actually, they didn't earn any more money than this.
No, the seven day rate, but again, you're you, the the seven day rate is very handy, very liquid, except. Let's say the the rates drop and, you know, all of a sudden that, because that used to be a five, a year and a half ago, that's a five. And so if you put it into a four two and and in in two months, something happens in the market and it goes to a three two, which it could. Um all of a sudden, you're thinking, darn, I should have put in that six month. So it's it's a balancing act.
Okay.
Um but because of your capital improvement needs, the the your CIP plans.
Yes.
Um you should have, you should have it in a more liquid program. Uh but exactly what you were saying is you can, you can time these out. Uh and absolutely, when you're talking, Kathy, to your local banker, just say, here's what we're looking at, how can you match it if you want to stay local? Don't tell Angie that.
So our next steps would be to, we can sum up continuously, but have Angie come back. And then we also want to adopt a new investment policy as well.
You may have one or adopted a long time ago.
Okay.
I I I would have it.
Okay.
It's just, it's it's, it's very common to have one, it's very common that because Missouri is so restrictive, they're like, oh, all we can do is put enough D I C. And triple A rated stuff, so everybody ignores.
Got you. We we have a draft to bring to the board.
And um. Forgot my train of thought. Um we can. I guess we can, we can cater that policy to hypothetically, if we were to go to MOSIP or if we were to. I we had a little bit of questions about that, about like. If if we were to make our policy more restrictive than the state statutes, what would that even look like? Or what would be the reason why you would want to do that?
I doubt, the state is so restrictive that I don't think we want. I think you'd limit your, you would limit it. Uh uh and there is zero reason that you can't invest in both. There is no reason you can't keep some of it local and some of it with MOSIP, and I would look at your, especially your longer term CDs. It's easier for a bank to match those than that seven day program. And and that way, your banker doesn't lose his the money that's in his account, but that that is up to you and your, go ahead.
Did this come from the jury?
I don't know.
Oh, that is the draft, yeah, I love that.
That went to the finance.
That went to the finance, too many, a couple months ago, maybe.
That was written a long time ago, I just pulled it out of my file.
So we can bring both Angie and that policy back to the entire group.
Yes, she needs to talk to the entire group instead of this. But I will recommend it as being in finance to me, she did a great job and I really liked what she was talking about and as far as like fees and stuff seem very, you know.
Very long, they're.
Very money.
Yeah.
Um I think all of them. With it was concerned that our our policy would be more restrictive than state statutes, and I'd like to, you know, reiterate again that they're.
I I would mirror the state statutes as much as possible, because they are restrictive, they're very restrictive. I probably will pull the investment policies from the state statutes, that's what I typically do, so if I, if that came to me and if I wrote it, that's probably where it came from.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Pleasure.
Next up, Bogalowski, Subelectrical Superintendent will present on the Electric Substation Improvements.
Good evening, Mayor, for Waldman, I'm Sean, want to be the speaker, believe. About these substation improvements. Uh so on July sixteenth, the uh Vessel Electric Crew made prepared as my parade. Uh to the Northwest Circuit, right there bypassed the substation. Um so, you know, our substation, you know, many of you've been there. Then we have the heart bus and it comes down to the breaker, it takes it out into the to the system. Uh we have a bypass, serious bypass switches or a series of switches for bypass, which nine altogether. That help you bypass that circuit breaker. Uh so. We were able to come in, it was two damaged switches along with four others. Uh that were replaced, but new switches designed with a greater distance clearance to ground. And so the insulator on those switches are are quite a bit longer. And the substation is grounded, so that's structure ground, so any wildlife interference or anything like that. It's pretty much box seven. The new switches. Uh designed with a greater distance clearance to ground, and although both switches are rated for the same voltage. On the new ten inch insulator, uh portion of that switch provides three more inches. Than the old one. But again, in the work during the early morning load demand, uh we were able to maintain full load by transferring the load of the Northwest Circuit. Uh to the East Circuit, uh through the go up switches in our in our system. Allowing the replacement of the main six switches and the nine switch bypass, we had already. Placed three of those uh during the outage at a long point. Um and I think, I'm not even sure which.
It was during the scheduled outage with every G F O.
You know, or during a damage. So, uh. This part, this concludes the replacement of all forty eight. Um switches serving active circuit and main breakers in twelve over seventy um substation. So. We have the forty one sixty twelve over seven. There's more switches than forty eight, forty eight is certainly active. Uh circuit breakers, we have some room for growth. Uh and so there's switches there as well. Um a lot of these switches, as far as I know, were original. These one six that we replaced, I believe, are probably original when we got the substation. So maybe thirty years ago or so. And they were a part of their, they had this lot. And they were used in the system and got the substation. Um so. This is good to have all of them switched out to this point. We were able to access the confined space of the center course, the substation. Use of the recently purchased factory machine, that I think is the first time, this is the first time in five years we've been able to work on this energy job. So we were able to take and reroute the on the Northwest Circuit to the East Circuit. And open up that line, still worked it as it was hot, but then on the inside of the substation, very confined space. We were able to get that small machine in there and work uh during, covered up. And was able to work very safely in there to assist and helping the backside of these switches, they do. Move these big switches. So additional protective cover up and soft bus and so the extensive water source stall. And structuring reinforcement uh was made. Um these improvements along with additional protective cover up that is currently pretty much in a bidding process to this point. Should greatly minimize wildlife interference terms and lower the plate operation. So we're kind of excited to be able to complete, uh let's take a file. Most of the time on those forty eight switches, uh we've done outages, take outages, uh planned outages, do that. Do that work, but so that's. Any questions?
And there's a the benefit, you you might have mentioned it and I got started, but the benefit of the size difference between the old and the new. Okay.
Three inch, you know, forty seven fifty percent, I think.
Uh longer insulator that just keeps the the pot part. Uh away from the substation is three more inches, which uh quite a bit. I mean, when it comes with your, with seven inches long, the ten is is perfect, so. Um the rating on those is fifteen K, but they were a smaller, they were a shorter switch. I think that's an older version of overweighted, but now it's your, what we've got purchased now. Is much longer, will provide the work.
But it helps with wildlife interference, right?
Yeah, no, because you're you're keeping that bus work out further away from that substructure.
It's great.
So that's going up, and then the protective uh. Cover up will be out.
In our C N P.
So the wildlife will span that east and north, right, and that causes problems, so this would fit the larger animal, do that. Or is that right?
Right, we have a plan of protection, protecting cover up, but yes. So just recently, uh we had just start that we're just flying, so we've done a really good job. Of keeping the the nasty things like that, which can be a problem in a structure like that. Uh I guess to understand, our forty one sixty substation basically is the same size, but it looked like it, but there's two, there's two of those. And there's many circuits in that forty one sixty as there is twelve four seven. In five years, we've not had a problem in that forty one six, so two reasons, one, the voltage won't jump as far. But the other is structured, and so were this structure probably, I call it a represent. Structure for me, uh but it was, I think it got back on engineering back there. But you can basically engineer this yourself, it's just a series of old grilled inkworm, that you can just mix and match and just build this a little. To your problem sometime, so no engineering, those kinds of things. Drawback is, there is a lot more structure and successful uh to. You know, we get a lot of wildlife, so it's just a lot of year decline and those kind of things, so and then there's a lot, there were nasty areas. Done a really good job of keeping most nasty, those things cleared out. This was just, you know, how the charred and through the gas pattern. These young, these young villagers, they're probably uninvested. That is, I mean, so uh public clearance, I think, is just going to be huge, because you're talking about pretty small.
Well, it's great improvements, thank you very much, we're really happy about that, so thank you so much.
All right, next up is a discussion, uh we're going to discuss the Public Safety Sales Tax Use Tax Option, the City Admins.
Um yes, so I just wanted to uh bring this to you, so we, for Public Safety Sales Tax, we really wrapped up. The um focus group, they've, you know, made their recommendations to you. Um some time has lapped since then, as we approach, you know, summer month, the remaining of the summer months and. And cycle into fall and winter, we really would like to have a little bit more of a clear cut understanding of. What the board's direction is based off of those recommendations and really kind of hammer out the timeline, most importantly, of when. We anticipate wanting to move forward with. What what the, whatever the board decides, I should say, and then use tax too, um. We haven't really formally discussed use tax in this setting, but I think we have to start somewhere in discussing. What our options are and and where, what direction we're wanting to go with that as a board. Um we've talked about. Dedicated use tax versus non-dedicated use tax, where non-dedicated use tax would be distributed amongst our existing different. Um sales tax uh categories, there's a fly, sorry. Um so like, for example, we have the half cent for C I P, half cent for transportation, half cent for um. The third one. Parks and parks and stormwater technically. Um yes, and then a whole um cent for general overall, so we can take that use tax. Um and just, it would be distributed in the same categories or same buckets, if you will, or we can dedicate it to one source and we can kind of craft our. Our ballot language to ensure some security to our residents that it would be dedicated, and that's more of a legal question, but. They can help us with that if that's the direction that the board chooses to go, but I just wanted to um start the conversation. But I just wanted to, um, start the conversation for both of those two topics, so.
Start off. So I, you know, I've read through, uh, I think Alderman was, was on this too, too. So, um, I've read through all the recommendations personally, I, I applaud them and I, I like everything that's, that's on. Also think, in my opinion, that if we put it back on the ballot, we should, we should say that this money is going to go towards the, you know. Building and maintenance of a police station, simply because I think that might get it passed. That's my thing, so, um, back to that, the. In getting community engagement portion, we only have, if we would put this on in April, we really only have like, what, seven months? So, uh, we might be a little bit behind the eight ball and I know you were on that nitty. And I'm reading here some things that, you know, we should do. We probably ought to get our toe in the water on this right away, uh, and maybe all of these things on here that you recommend. Uh, a lot of it's on the city website, is that correct? So that would be YouTube streaming recordings, public documents.
We just, we kind of just listed those things as, um, like a transparency component from the focus group. So all of the information and work that the focus group put forth, that, all of that's available on the city's website.
But I, I, I mean, we need to do a little bit better probably on getting this out to the community, maybe that, you know. For the, and having an oversight board, would you set that up now or wait if it ever got passed? Or are you talking about maybe the oversight board handling communication to, you know, promote this sales cap or?
I think the first part that you, that you mentioned was talking about an education effort to, to tell, talk to them. Tell them what it's, what it's all about. Uh, the oversight, uh, committee was kind of a, a, uh. Effort to. For transparency so that the community would know exactly what the money was going for. It's a pretty simple and really overkill to the process because the payment's going to go to debt service and maintenance bills. Uh, there's a lot of communities that do that, not only for, uh, the, uh, public safety sales tax. But some of them do that, do it for transportation sale tax and other sales tax collections. Uh, so it'll just be a, a, a simple matter of the oversight committee would make a report every three months, one month, whatever period they choose. That says sales tax collective was this, money was paid for this, this amount of payments. Uh, paid to this for cleaning, maintenance, repairs, whatever, similar to what the city puts out. And it wouldn't be included in the city financial report anyway. So it's just an abstraction from city financial report, putting a separate report, this is the community oversight report for that.
So would this committee be established for promotion to, or is this something only once it passed?
It'd be after.
Okay, here's my, what the chief of police and staff did, we all tried to really promote this the last time we put it out there. Where, and it's pretty much saying this at host events, open houses at, you know, current facility or virtual options, engage the local outlets. What, what can we do better this time? Than we did last time? And get it done in seven months to get the information out there because it's, to me, it's. You're, you've got the same recommendations on here that we've already done once. So is there any insight into what can we do better this time? I mean, I just did it all over two hundred twenty two.
That process so far, what you said, it's actually same as what was done the last time. Uh, except I think if I'm wrong, chief, I think, uh. What we said was we can do it better. And what we did last night, we can do it better. Okay. My personal opinion is that the biggest problem that most people had was dollars. And I think that would be the biggest thing that we as a board could do is to figure out how we can address the dollars. In the way that the facility is built. Now, I will say, what was the ten on the board? I would say there's probably three out of the ten. That, uh, I think would agree that a phased approach would be the thing to do. Maybe you build, uh, something that's functional, that's half the cost for the whole building would be in phase one. Then you get the rest of the building in phase two. Okay. Um. There are most of them, I think, were saying, no, we need to do the whole thing. Well, which is going to get it passed. There's advantages to building the whole thing, some definite advantages. Because prices go up with time. So overall, that's probably going to be less expensive. The advantage to doing it in phases is probably going to be that you're going to get more votes and maybe get it passed and get the officers in the building.
Okay, so we need to give staff direction really right away on this and phases or not phases. I, I kind of read this as, and correct the timer on, that if we start getting the word out there that we were, you know, we're thinking of three eight cent sales tech. That's all this money is going to go towards the building. Um, when we get closer to April, we can maybe. It, it's, it's hard to know what building costs are going to be at any, any week or more. So, um, I feel like, in my opinion, that we need to start getting the word out there. We have seven months or we are not going to be able to win it on.
I guess the question, my question for the board is April, when you want to try for?
Just said not before then, and I, we really need a police station. I mean, even if it passes in April, we've got a long way to go over there. You know, you're in, you're in a need.
What was the minimum requirement for could put that on, six months?
It was one year, so this month would have been one year.
This year would have been the minimum, so we can put it anytime after this.
Yeah.
What else is on the ballot?
The school district, as far as I'm aware, the school district is wanting to put their large, um. Property or real estate tax increase on you.
Right, I think we could definitely start pushing the need to do. But before we put it on the ballot, I think we need to tell them, you know, what the process is going to be. We need to decide is it going to be phased or the whole. What is the tax going to go towards, that's the whole.
What would be the drop dead day to getting it all about? We started making a process.
January.
Have to make a decision before January whether it was going to overcome.
But then you have from January to April to. Educate.
Yeah, which I would hope that if we decided to do it, people by January, we will, we will well, we'll try to. We are.
Yeah, you'd have to be. Um, to your point about communication, I will say that this is, the recommendation is somewhat of a summary of what was really discussed. We spent a lot of time on that portion of things. So I know that we have additional notes on some specifics or examples. Um, some of it was related to like the national night out event and using that, like. One of the suggestions that the committee had was to move the national night from the pool to the existing facility. So we kind of think of that step.
Um, yeah. There's my, I've got some use tech stuff to talk about, but we need to like make, give them some direction.
Going to the, to the meetings. And they did a very good job. I mean, they, there was a lot of discussion. But from going to the meetings. Everything they came up with was the same thing we came up with prior, prior. Basically, the only thing was different was kind of is do a better job.
The largest, the largest things would be reducing from a half cent to three eight cent and shortening the period of debt to from. I think we originally proposed forty years, so this is twenty five to thirty years.
And dedicate it.
Yes, and dedicate it and have the oversight.
There was no purpose rate, no price put on it, because no one said, because you can't. It was basically, it was basically about temporary. We do three eight cent sales tax. And this is the money, this is the amount of money that it would raise. And so then we then would have to figure out what kind of building to build with this amount of money.
But didn't you have a drawing that they cut that long?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
We have something to work with. We just don't have a dollar until we get closer to staff, right?
Yeah, it's a little bit of like a chicken or egg type of thing, and that's why they took out the, the price amount. I mean, we, we narrowed down the square footage, shaved a lot of square footage off, removed the community, um, storm shelter. And then shaved down the actual station part itself even more. But to determine that we could reduce the, the cent request from half cent to three eight cent. But then you turn that on its head and it's like, okay, well, this question needs to be asked in April. We don't know what this square footage that we're proposing today in this meeting is going to look like later. So the main, the main priority I, I felt was that they were wanting to reduce that three, the one. Or the half cent to the three eights and, and shorten the term because I think there was a shock factor in the forty years as well.
So do you think with what's being, going to be put on the board in April of twenty six, but you know, the school district or what? Do you think we should? Hold off or?
That's a crystal ball question.
What's cloudy crystal ball?
It's a cloudy crystal ball.
Uh, what if, what if we try it and then we've got another year to, you know, try it in twenty seven? I mean, I don't know. If we don't do it in April, we could do it in.
Has the school voted to put that on the ballot yet?
No.
But they're leaning that way?
They have leaned that way, but. There are other considerations going on. There's of course, uh. Some questions about how the stadium bill is going to affect everyone's facilities this year.
I'm sorry, the what?
The stadium bill with a five percent cap. And the poll acts that I'm sure all were expecting, calculating. There's. A lot going on, I will keep in mind that November and August. Of next year are midterms. And they will.
Don't you think we could work on it for seven months? I mean, you worked so hard on the last, I don't.
My staff and I are willing to do the work, yes. People work hard, you know, for that general direction.
Yeah.
Direction on, on. And the focus group's direction.
I mean, I think we've got a good ground laid here, right? And.
I, I think you gave, that, that focus group gave us good direction, like.
Yeah.
What we need to focus on with, focus on with the community, um, engagement. And, um, we will work hard to, um. Make sure that there are much answers.
And, and maybe as it were involved, we can help as well, a little more than we did, you know, the last, uh, I mean.
There's only so many modes of communication that you can use and they covered most of the first attempt. You have to use those things, modes of communication, just present, package it a little bit differently. And there's a couple of other ways, media ways to do this, I mean, we get rid of it. Some of the local radio stations, it's a little different, it's up there. Yeah, get that out there on the airway, there's some extra thing to enhance that communication, so we can look at the website.
Oh, we did discuss, um, in the, uh, in our master plan, uh, group. So that when that consultant strategic plan started, when the strategic plan consultant, uh, part of that. Uh, development process was input from the department. It's in one of, my input was, uh, natural plan was police facility. So there will be a published report by that strategic plan group that we could use to, uh, help promote, um, information. It'll probably stimulate some questions, but then we can anticipate maybe some answers to the public, uh, board. Uh, but that's one thing that's already in the works. And then Sean had already mentioned our national night out, we did move that in preparation, uh, more towards the fall and the location. Our goal is not only for a nice community event, but I'll have a whole house that. And my, my hope is that whoever come, is able to come to the community event, might take fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes to come over and actually tour the, the facility. Um, and so we were looking at a, of course, we moved it to the October to get it more into the fall time, uh, range. And a little nicer weather maybe than the heat, uh, that we have experienced with previous.
A lot of the communication that we discussed with the, with the focus group revolved around. Where, where we did everything that we did, do that and then add to the element of. Showing, showing the community what the current state is as opposed to asking them to come and look at it. So to flip that on its head a little bit, and that's something we can pretty easily do. By having opportunities for them to be present and, uh, using different electronic media and stuff like that, so.
Do we get that? Uh, when you, you say the general consensus.
Like consensus is let's go, let's give it a try and put it on in April. I mean, school board hasn't voted yet, so maybe it's possible they will.
Well, we don't have to decide to put on until January, but we need to start doing something, we're going to do something, so. We can bring back, I mean, we could work with the attorneys to go ahead and draft some language so that, you know, the focus. You guys compare that with what the focus group recommendations are. And that gives us a little time to tweak the language if you don't like exactly the first or second or third draft. Um, that's okay, if, if you give us direction, we can work with the father's office to ask to speak the language, where you guys want it to. That will take a little bit of time.
And we do have guidance from the, the focus group on what that language, not specifics, but overall about the maintenance and debt. So it'll be a little different than last time where we had the three different options that kind of were up in the air.
All right, we'll expect the hard part of you coming up with that dollar amount that people will accept. We can take the three eight cents and factor in the bond rate that Joey thinks we're going to get, come up with a maximum. Project amount and say, you know, that's how much we've got, we're going to build a building and stay within it. But if that's not what the voters are going to accept, we're wasting everyone's time and some money.
And that's another year.
Is figure out what the voters will accept, what we really think that they accept. And figure out a plan that will slide in with the dollar amount that we think that they'll do. And make that functional, I said, build a plan to get to what we ultimately would.
Don't you know more, Jay, with what that dollar?
We can pull the, pull the.
At least closer to.
Ask them.
Ask them what, how much they want to spend.
Tell them what the need is and what would they feel possible.
What are, what are we projecting three X that brand?
Two fifty, yeah, two fifty five.
Going to, with lots of people. When they find out with so much cost, it scares them to death. But I mean, sticker shock scares them to death. It's just, just, just the electronics and it's, it's going to be astronomical. And I think that's where the education needs to be. Everybody knows if they're reasonable, they know we need a police station, they know we need to do something, right? But getting over that sticker shock is where the education needs to be. They'll say, hell, now I'm not going to spend two billion dollars for a police station. Well. Education needs to be, it's awesome, this much of this. And equipment needs is this, we can phase it in, in this way. Collect the tax, pay that off, that's our minimum needs. But then later on, you know, we're going to, we're going to report to you everything we're going to do. We're going to have, whatever the sales tax pays off, pays on the payment. It's going to be advertised over thirty years or whatever, so we've got enough cash flow to pay it off early. Now, we've reported everything to you, we've paid it off, we've been open and transparent to you. Now we want to finish building, it will be phase two. Okay, we've trusted you to let us do this, we kept our word. Now join us and let's do the next phase.
The numbers that we use when, just for full. The numbers that we used when, just for full understanding, the numbers that we used when we had the focus group sessions. We were ballparking that a thirty year three eight cents would be enough for construction of a four point nine million dollar. Twenty five years, four point three eight, and twenty years, three point seven four. So they put that range on there because of the range that that changes in the in the debt payments. So project size of three point seven, four point three, four point nine from twenty, twenty five, thirty. And that's two hundred and fifty five thousand dollar annual payments.
And that's a ballpark.
And that's that's at that time.
The assumption needs to be that it's a sales tax, it's probably not just from the residents, but anybody. Anybody that comes in our town to buy with me, it's not, this is not something that is completely all. That's where I think the education really is. I know, but I think when you get to press that more, it's not, it's not. You don't find your, you're not. There's a ballpark first, nine four four point nine. Four four million.
Well, that will be the total project, four point nine, if you take that hammer session or that that payment based on four point nine and you have a two billion dollar project or two and a half billion dollar project. That's gonna be paid off in the less than half of the time.
How much of this needs to be decided tonight, so the language and base option?
Um, I think we bring the language back to you guys at our probably a draft at least at our next meeting and we can just continue the conversation. We definitely need, if it if it's not necessarily that we formally adopt that we're signing off on this ballot language now in Sept- August, September or April, that's fine, but we're gonna need the direction that says we're going for April. Go forth then.
That would be my vote, go for it and get, start doing promoting and get some.
So is a general consensus to sell of the board to to move forward with April? And we can start educating or not?
Everybody wants to speak against. I have no problem with April.
We'll bring language back for the next one and continue the conversation.
Okay. And then there's use tax options?
Yep.
And we've talked about this quite a bit that I, we're missing out on so much money. Because the city of Odessa does not collect these texts on online. So it, we tried to pass it many years ago, it's been.
Twenty eighteen, I believe.
Um, it's time to try it again. And if if maybe it was passed better if it was a debt. If somebody, if they thought it was going to.
I thought it should go to streets.
I think we might have a better chance of getting it passed, even though I would really like to spread it out with parks, general fund and all the other. But to get it passed, I think you'd almost have to have some kind of language to dedicate it at least for, you know, a period of time, because the streets seem to be what is in every person's. Vocabulary, but. But when you put that on.
We're you, we're missing out on a lot. So just some statistics, fifteen percent of all retail sales are now online at least.
Fifteen percent.
Which that tracks with Higginsville from their numbers that their city administrator provided to me that they budget each year for fifteen percent of their regular sales tax will be use tax.
And already, I don't know how current this one is, but half of Missouri cities with the population of two thousand or more have these tanks. So it's not that we're trying to do anything different or.
But could you say it goes to transportation then?
I believe so.
Right.
Jeff Conson, you can dedicate your transportation tax to, we wanna make sure we confidently dedicate it. So there's no doubt either to our residents that it's for sure can only go to.
Yeah, and that's how you use it to tailor your ballot language when the time comes, what we're gonna put on there. And we'll be able to tailor it, uh, as tightly or loosely as you'd like. Sounds like a great title.
I don't think we should put a vote on it. You know.
No, okay.
I don't, maybe we should put use tax on it and use, I think we would have better like use tax.
It's hard to tell. I mean, if you look at Pleasant Hill, they put four initiatives on last April and three of them passed. So it's hard to ju- judge it like that.
I didn't believe that because when it comes to sales tax, you're asking for a sales tax for the police station and you're asking for our local businesses to eat more essentially, you know, those of us, so for example, we eat our sales tax. It comes out of our set price. We don't get to turn a dollar, whatever on a rack that is a dollar and eat whatever the sales taxes. And while a lot of retail businesses tack onto the sales tax, that can still end up to turn business. So when you add a sales tax, you're putting the burden on your local businesses, you're offering something in the community that they're in. With the use tax, you're telling the local businesses that you're also charging the other people. And I think that will help you with them and it was on at the same time.
Thank you, thank you very much. Do you wanna try putting both on in April?
Why not?
I know, I mean, usually, I think the downtown group, yeah, I think the downtown businesses are getting on board with this. What we're trying to do, will that be without getting it both. Finish line.
I'd say, people I talk to is education and understand what it is. I myself is. So education, then having a dedicated purpose of.
Yeah.
So since you are concerned about streets, this is one other way we're going to address that concern. Black funding, we can't do much.
Yeah.
So this is gonna be to a dedicated.
It's my understanding that previously when it was on the ballot, it was a general sales tax that we wanted to dedicate to transportation. This would be a transportation, we're we're taking a tax and dedicating it to transportation only. It's not, it's kinda flipped on its head. Oh, it was a levy. It was a levy that we were dedicating to. But the di- the difference is this, we have a transportation sales tax. So we're just making the use tax go to alternate. It's a little bit cleaner, I guess, than what was previously presented to the to the residents.
If we do the use tax, which I. Are we encouraging people, citizens, to buy more online stuff than not? I know, but I just mean, you know, I just, I don't, I don't want them to think that's not supporting.
And I think I read that like Amazon, some places collect the tax. But it doesn't get distributed to us because like they're already collecting tax, but it doesn't get distributed.
It's that everything but our tax is being collected. So the state has a use tax, the county has a use tax. So there's all the mechanisms, it's already there, but our tax is not being collected and given to someone else. It's just it's not being collected. Everyone else is benefiting from the use tax except for us.
The 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 purchase method that they use, where the where the and not the the corporation has to be out of state where it's.
I think Jeff can.
If you sit at your house, mayor, and order something on Amazon, it will charge, when the use tax is in place, it will charge you. When, eh, because it goes through somebody else. I I just did that today. I ordered something at Amazon that collects the tax because my municipality does. Uh, what it what it's doing is it's recapturing what's lost by you not going down to the corner store and buying it there. So what you're really doing by passing that use tax and the way to sell it to folks is say, look, you are giving that money away to somebody else, letting somebody out of the city, possibly out of the state, possibly out of the country, keep that money. That basically taking it from local businesses and and giving it away. Yeah, so.
Mickey, it's, it's, Mickey, it's taking it in the sense that, and I always, this is, I always use the chicken coop example, but when we were, we had the chicken coop ordinance, um, nerds started selling chicken coops. If someone were to want to purchase a chicken coop, it would be cheaper for them to buy it on Amazon than it would be for them to buy it at Nerds today. So it's, it's, it's more so, we keep saying level the playing field. But it's not taking away from local businesses or necessarily adding to local businesses, but it, we shouldn't make it so it's more costly to purchase. It's not that it's enough to really deter it, depending on what the item is. If it's a very large item, it could very much so deter the purchase from online versus in Odessa. But generally speaking, if someone wants to buy something that is both online in Odessa, those should be completely even.
Yeah, it equal, it equalizes the 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 cost outside of shipping and handling. So you buy it from your local place, you're not paying shipping and handling, but if you buy it from Amazon, you may, or you buy it from teams, you're gonna ship, it's gonna cost you something, so.
And that's even more a notch against us because shipping continues to be free.
Someplace.
A lot of places now.
Shall we direct it and interact? Let's start doing education on that, too.
Anybody against starting the education process on use tax? The direction media, hold on, what's it? All right, any any other discussion on the use tax? Very good. All right, moving on. Uh, discussion, after the discussion, motion, the second we sought authorize the city administrator proceed with the selection and contract creation with PayPoint HR for job analysis and compensation to study services. Discussion. I would much prefer we not do this and use this for cities hall staff. And arrangement type, they're saying all staff needs is much more than we need. Uh, whereas this can be done next year.
Um, I would, I would just, I would say that right now, city hall staff is bleeding because we're one man short. But all of our departments are bleeding. They're all, they're all in need of attention when it comes to our compensation. And I I I would be, I would feel very bad if we were to take that, that that study money away and spend it on city hall only when all of the other departments are in in need as well. I would not feel comfortable with that.
It could be shared with all the departments. Everyone has need. Uh, we can do a lot of this study internally now.
Not to the level of of detail that they would be able to provide, no. We've done it internally ourselves once and it did, we're still in need, so. I was in twenty twenty, twenty nineteen.
Um, in addition to just the salary study, it does offer some job descriptions, things that will help.
Handbook revisions.
Which I have been on committees to do a handbook and that's a long time investment. So, I mean, I know the price seems high. But, um, but the time that it would take them away from their duties, duties to do. That would be my reason to do this.
Well, I see both arguments. Um, I see where we do get a little more benefit with the HR handbook. But I do also see that going back to the discussion we had during the budget meeting, is we gathered in five minutes, we knew we weren't paying our people what we could. And this study is not gonna magically give us funds to pay people more.
Well, it it will not give us funds, but one of the key things that I personally liked about PayPoint is that they will give you that kind of customized plan. They know that you cannot fix everything for everyone in one year. So they're going to help customize, like this is what your impact would be in this fiscal year and then this one and so on and so forth. To help you implement it and not just be burdened with this giant number at the end of it.
So you're saying that they're gonna tell us how we can create more money to pay our people more?
No, I didn't say that. I just said that they will help us with an implementation plan to better understand. So they can customize it to say, um, everyone in the top sixtieth percentile should be paid in year one. Or or everyone within the police department that's under this X percentage should be paid in year two. They'll help us customize it based on whatever we need. It's not gonna generate revenue, of course not. But it's gonna help us be able to implement the the need that we have.
So correct me if I'm wrong, this is money, the twenty five thousand is, um, we've already. All this is asking for is a seventy five thousand extra because the other.
You know, in the last probably six months, I've got a whole new crew. Most of my guys have left because of higher pay somewhere for some of that. So, uh, you guys were talking about this use tax, wanting to go for streets and get more street work done and stuff. I don't have a crew to do street work. Uh, I've got three of us in Ohio. And in order to keeping people here that are trained in creating street work, we say this much of work. Also, we also do water. I spent all day today doing water stuff, didn't do anything on the streets that we had planned. So I think we need this kind of study done to see where we are and see where we're falling short. And pay the people to stay here so we can have a crew that knows how to do street. Maybe it can get where we can split the water and street back up again so we can focus on just streets. You know, and we get the use tax, we can start doing more street work and be more out on the street. So I I think this study is really important, I think for most of us, uh, with our staff and stuff. Because we're kinda tired of training people and it's makes it really hard on us. I I get twelve streets to pay this year. And it's gonna be hard for me to get them because I got a staff of three. We're training other people how to do it, so it's it's very hard to do that and keep up with water, so.
We need to exit interviews for people.
We do.
Yes.
So we know why they leave. Know what the pay difference is, how much more they're making.
Yes.
So that gives us some some information to know how we need to adjust our pay scale when they leave.
We ask them for their reasons, not the actual dollar figure, so. So if pay is a reason, they can tell us that pay is a reason, but we're not gonna ask them for how much they're gonna make elsewhere.
Okay, what I would argue, if you kind of know what the industry standards are, you could guess without a study. You go to independence, you're gonna make how much more as an officer. A lot, and you guys have those. So I get what you're saying and I agree with you. We need to find ways to keep people, and one of it is money. How does, I I'm all for studying and understanding things, but how does this thirty seven thousand dollars help us create more money to pay more people to keep them to stay? Well, we thirty two, or thirty two, sorry, if we, if you don't see that, but I'm all for it. I don't see how this is gonna create revenue to help us.
It's not. It will not.
That's my point.
I understand. It will not, just to be clear.
So I would guess that if we did some investigation and calculation that we have spent more than thirty two thousand five hundred dollars in turnover by retraining, recertifying uh, extra hours spent by supervisors. Are we just gonna keep throwing that out? Not the.
Is this gonna end it? Is it gonna end it?
Well, and also from like a salary perspective too, is like there's more than this study is gonna provide to us beyond just pay. There's a lot of ways to retain people without just increasing their paychecks. And we've honestly tried, the last three years, we've gotten five percent, six percent, six percent. And they're still leaving, so not saying that pay is not a contributing factor because I know for a fact that it is. But there has to be other things that we can do besides just, let's just throw money, throw money, throw money at the problem until we get results. And I, this is going. And I, this is going to help us be able to sort through that and see it a lot more clearly and a lot more. Unbiely, quite frankly.
Oliver Wilson, motion to to offer our city administrators to continue with the selection and contract creation with PayPoint. Any motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, the second. All in favor? All in votes? Five one, the motion carries. All right, moving on. Proposed resolution number twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, adopting rules of meeting procedures for the board of Alderman meetings. Local discussion. One was a discussion on the. We notes, booklets, so we'll take a break.
One question I have, and I don't know whether this is it. Seems like imperfect place to put it, I don't know, but we might have, I I sent the email to Shauna earlier this week, uh is. What process do we have for the community to get things on the agenda? Go through us?
And public comments.
And say, other than public comments, how how do people say, hey, I wanna address the board formally and have discussions? Okay, that's what I'm asking, like, is that?
Oliver, it's it's a meeting of the Board of Aldermen held in public, it's not a meeting of the public. Held with the Board of Aldermen, so yeah, it's that. As far as the agenda, I gotta say, uh or the Alderman being able to add his identity agenda. I gotta say, I love it. Uh I I don't think that. I don't think that some other people work in the life of it, but. I love it.
I'll make a motion that we uh approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, Board of Aldermen Rules of Meeting Procedures.
Second, second. We have our motion in a second, all in favor? Six zero, resolution passed. Our next meeting is Monday, Office of Public, at six P M. Launch the chain.
I just wanted to give a really quick update, though, I forgot to say in our in our reports, in my Alder or admin report. Because Darren had a water emergency this morning, but will you just give a quick highlight of the streets that you guys have completed so far and kinda where you are?
Um we've got North Third done, uh North Russell, we've got both of them, like, um. Perfect Court's done. In Tenia Hills, we've got four streets ground down now, we're gonna. Get uh throw a dollar done uh this week, try and get it ground down. Uh and then we're gonna pay both of them next week, uh get Ford McDowell. Uh throw a dollar down next week, and then we're gonna have to wait for a while together to get replaced on on the House Lane. And then we'll be good, and then we'll have a meeting in the station, so. Hopefully, the next conference will have a lot of more.
They do have a long list to do this year, we've shifted from chip seal to a little bit more overlay, so they've got. They've got a lot to do.
And we've had a couple more, we've got, we've got the fourth today, Squire, since you don't fail to have the water plant, so. Got a lot of water stuff going to put in several uh water surfaces on Dryden, uh. Start the work on Pine Creek over here, get them in, so that's gonna be part of that year, so. Quite a bit of work.
Okay.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.